Join us.
Well, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Penny Bartley. I'm the Director for SCORE. And prior to going to SCORE, I was a Renton employee for 21 years. So it's always nice to come back here and feels like home. So I want to go through what's happened in the last year, which is a lot over there at the new facility. We have a gorgeous picture of the exterior of the building and several more photos that we'll show you as I go on. So SCORE is unique. We are the one and only jail that is set up like it is. We're the only truly regional jail within Washington State. We are owned by seven agencies. Those are Auburn, Burien, Des Moines, Federal Way, Renton, Sea-Tac, and Tuculpa. We serve collectively a population of 340,000 people. There's no single agency that controls SCORE. As you know, we have an administrative board and then there is also an operations board made up of the police chiefs from each of those seven member agencies. We were never designed to be a money-making business. What we were scheduled to do was to try and control our costs and control our own destiny, know what the future was to look like, and trying to be able to better manage the jail costs. And the other thing that's pretty unique to us is that we actually built for our future capacity needs. So right now, we do have excess capacity and we anticipate continued growth as we've been seeing since we've opened in September. Okay. So now I've got to think what I'm doing wrong with that. So going back historically, you know, we started this project many, many years ago and I'm going to take you a little bit of history and how we got to where we are. So King County is unique. Washington State's unique in the fact that the cost associated with keeping somebody in jail is borne by the agency that arrests that individual. If you go to other places of the country, it's not like that. You go back east and the jails are typically run by the Sheriff's Department and the Sheriff's Department's budget covers those costs. Well, here in Washington State, it's borne by the local law enforcement agencies or perhaps by the court system. However, the individual jurisdiction has allocated those expenditures. So right now, the existing booking fees in King County Jail are about $195 and they pay $132 a day to house somebody in King County Jail. So it's a very, very expensive proposition. And so when in 2001, we were notified by King County Jail that they would no longer be able to continue to house inmates. And at that point in 2001, we negotiated a 10-year exit strategy for the municipal inmates out of King County Jail.
Penny? Uh, excuse me?
Go ahead.
When we negotiate, when the exit strategy was negotiated, that was really because county wanted us out of there. I mean, they, they kind of, they said, "You're out of there and you've got this much time to decide what you want to do." So I think it's important the public knows that we were forced into...
Yes, that's very true. We didn't have a choice to leave. We were told originally that we had 30 days to remove the inmates and then through a very long process, we were able to negotiate that 10-year exit strategy. But yes, we didn't have a choice in the matter. So back in 2001, this is kind of what South King County looked like, is that we had way more inmates than we had jail capacity for. And so we looked at what our options were. It's that there was no space, there was no money, there was no support to build a new jail, there were not a lot of options. And even though Renton had its own jail, a 50-bed jail, their average daily population was in the realm of about 120. So you had 100% more inmates and you had ability to house locally. Okay, I think I got the mouse figured out now. So Renton, along with all of the other cities, came up with a number of short-term solutions. And just like Band-Aids, they stick pretty good at first and then they start to wear off. And all of a sudden, they aren't sticking so well. So our options were to compete for the available jail beds with everybody else on the open market. And what we found is that that was a very, very expensive proposition because as soon as you have a limited resource that's out there, it goes to the highest bidder. Another option was to emphasize alternatives to jail. And in the city of Renton, you were already converting about 30% of your population to alternatives, primarily home detention. And so unfortunately, you'd already maximized that percentage of the jail population that could be diverted. And then one of the other options that was thrown about was for a number of cities to build a lot of smaller jails. Unfortunately, what they found was that duplicating jail services is very, very expensive. And being able to manage what we call the 3M population, those people that are medical, mental health, and management populations, is prohibitively expensive when you're looking at very small facilities. Okay. So every time I do this, you know, short-term memory, I'm going to figure out which way the mouse rolls there. So the amount of increase, what we did is that we looked at what the jail budgets were for our seven-member cities. And this slide illustrates the percentage of increase that Renton was exhibiting. So if you look at Renton back in 2002, your jail population costs were just under $2 million. And by 2009, it had escalated to almost $4.4 million. So Renton in and of itself had a 100% increase over a six-year period. And that's simply unsustainable. Okay. So here's a graphic where we looked at what the Renton jail cost expenditures were and looked at the escalation. And if escalation continued at the same rate that it occurred from the period of 2003 through 2009, then by the time we got to 2022, Renton's jail expenditures would be more than $15 million a year. And that's simply unsustainable. We knew we could not continue to spend those kinds of funds on jail services. So similarly, we projected what would happen if we were to create a separate organization and construct a jail and what would the projected jail costs be for Renton under that variant, at that point, very early preliminary costing model, which would put your jail costs at about $7 million at 2022. So what that does is that by operating SCORE is that we anticipated that it would cut your jail costs over the next 15-year period by about 50%. Okay, I'm guessing. Okay, got that figured out finally. So what I'm going to do is fast-forward through history here. So in 2001, we got the notice from King County that said that you needed to get out of jail. In 2005 and 2006, all of the cities in King County, all 39 cities, did what was called the Ritchie-Green Study. And what that was is that it was a long-term needs assessment and looked at what we, all of the cities, would need for jail capacity over the next 20-year period. And what they identified was that we would need 700 jail beds in South King County in order to accommodate our long-term needs over that 20-year period. So as a result of that original Ritchie-Green Study, then the SCORE cities came together. And originally, there were four cities, which were Renton, Tuculpa, Des Moines, and Federal Way. And they agreed to do a feasibility study in 2007. And based upon the outcome of that feasibility study was the, the understanding that we could build and construct and operate a jail for less than what our existing expenses were. So then in 2008, things really started to come together when we were able to locate a site to build the facility. And our present location where we are in the city of Des Moines is a 16-acre site that we were able to obtain through the Port of Seattle and also through WashDOT, through a friendly condemnation process. So we got 16-acre site for just over $2 million, so at about $4 a square foot, which is wonderful pricing on that property. And so that really brought things together in the fact that we were able to locate a site and be able to go forward with construction because without a site, we never would have gotten anywhere. So then in 2008, we also started doing the organizational planning, did the inter-local agreement and the site location and design. And then in 2009, we finished design and financing. We did land use condemnation, the building permits, the planning permits, and we did groundbreaking. It was an exciting year for us. And 2010 and most of 2011 has been all about construction. So here we are, groundbreaking back in August of 2009. And here we are today with the exterior of the building here. So we had 21 months of construction roughly. It took us about three months to do the ground clearing. And then they started with putting in the footings and we have a concrete tilt-up building. There is about 820 concrete panels that put together, make the facility. And they erected those in about three months. And the building was closed in, in late October of 2010. And then we've spent the last year doing all the interior finishing and the work at the facility. So giving you a brief walkthrough tour here, we opened the facility back on September 2nd. And just before I left to come over here, we have 349 inmates in custody right now. Our capacity is 813. As I said, we've built for future capacity, knowing what we'll need in the next 20 years. As you walk into the facility, this is the main corridor through the facility. If you've not been there before, you can tell here it's very bright, it's very illuminated, it gives us great visibility. And off this main corridor is where you access most of the other parts of the facility. So this is our booking area here. We have an open booking area, so inmates that are compliant can come and sit in the booking area and wait to be processed. They may be there for a few minutes, they may be there for a couple hours, depending on how busy we are. Right now, we average about 39 bookings a day. We've had a high of 52 bookings in a day. And that's right on track with where we anticipated our bookings will be, which will give us just under 15,000 bookings annually. Also off that main corridor is our video court area. So every day, we have seven, at least seven courts that inmates go to. So they go into a separate video courtroom. They're also represented there by an interpreter if needed and then also their defense attorney. And then we have a video connection back to each of the seven courts there. And each day, we have a large number of inmates, usually anywhere from 80 to about 120 inmates that go to video court. And by doing that, it reduces the number of inmates that have to be physically transported back and forth to the court. So this is actually a huge efficiency for us. It also helps if we have inmates that have charges from multiple agencies. So just last week, we had an inmate that needed to be in Auburn Court in the morning and Federal Way Court in the afternoon. We were able to accommodate both those courts on the same day, which means we can usually get them out of jail a day or two earlier because they're not having to be held over for that second court appearance. We also have a great medical area within our facility. We have 29 beds for infirmary housing. We also have a dental suite. And the next slide is x-ray. You may wonder why we have dental and x-ray there. We do contract out medical services with correctional healthcare. And the reason why we do dental and x-ray there at the site is because those were the medical services that we most frequently had to transport people outside the facility for. And so by bringing those services within the facility, it means it reduces our transportation costs and reduces our overall costs. So we have a dentist that comes in one day a week. And we've also found that there's a huge number of dental problems that contribute to other health problems that are masked. So if we can solve the dental problem, then we usually clear up the other lingering medical problems as well. As I said, the next one, this mouse really doesn't like me, that's our digital x-ray there. And I'm told it's just like a video game. If you push the button, it'll do all sorts of things for you. This is a typical housing pod for us. Our facility is broken into the north unit and the south unit. And each of those units has eight sections in it. And seven of those are dedicated for housing. The eighth one is for outdoor recreation. And so this is a typical housing pod in it. It has 16 cells in it, I'm counting. And each of those have four bunks in them. And inmates that are compliant, that have no disciplinary matters, can be out of their cells and into this open area, usually from 7:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night. If they are a disciplinary problem, then they can be locked down in what's considered administrative segregation. And those inmates are allowed out an hour a day.
Penny? Kind of a dumb question, but...
Sure.
Do you fill up the cell with four or do you fill up the cells and then start doubling people up and tripling them up and that type of thing?
So we fill the cells up with four and...
And you move to another empty cell.
Mm-hmm, and then move on, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And this is the typical inside to a cell. It's about seven feet wide and 20 feet deep. And so that meets the American Correctional Association's standards for jail space. We also have some that are double cells and which there's a, a double bunk just against the back wall as opposed to on each of the side walls here. The cells are all steel and so the bunks are also steel. Think austere camp cabin.
And Penny, the paint that you used is a special paint?
Yeah.
Get germs out and...
We have what's called antimicrobial paint. And so the entire cell is sealed in a single layer of paint. And then the floor is also bright white and it's kind of got a stripe down the center of the floor there. That is a glow-in-the-dark stripe so that if we lose all power, which would be highly unexpected because we do have redundant power source, but if we were to lose all illumination, if there was a large natural disaster or something like that happened, there still is some ambient light that is created from that. Also at night, when the cells are dark and there's a little bit of ambient light created from that glow, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Penny, as you may recall, I was one of the residents in that facility of...
I think your slide's up next, Mr. Taylor.
Last year. Oh, then I'll just wait then.
No, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to just comment that that night, there was four of us sharing a bunk, other individuals from law enforcement, and also one of the executives who worked for the contractor for the facility. But it was quite an interesting night. I can tell you that I don't want to go back. But needless to say that the facility is state-of-the-art and we were able to see with the, the ambient light during the night. There was a few of us that didn't get to sleep well that night, so.
Well, I'm sorry. I'm sorry you didn't sleep well.
The mayor was supposed to share a bunk with me, but at the last minute, he declined.
You know, just like people that come on commitments, there's always a few no-shows, you know? And I assure you, a warrant's been issued, you know? We'll take that. From our control room, this is the view of above in a housing area. I'm going to show you the control room. It's the dark kind of mirrored glass in the center of the screen there. And the next shot's going to show you the control room from the inside. This is one of the things that really makes SCORE unique is the fact that a lot of control rooms are in a basement or in a garage and they don't have any direct observation. So here's inside our control room. And it gives you just a sense of those housing pods. If you look above the officer that's seated there on the right, there's two separate housing pods that come together on the diagonal there. And so we have housing officers that can be seen by the control room up above. And there's always direct observation into each of those housing pods. We have either one or two separate control room operators, depending on the time of day. And the busier times, there's two people that are up there. We also have a completely redundant control room on the other side. So we have very good system control and very good direct monitoring of all of the cells. We have cameras in all of the cells. That's pretty unique. Many jails do not do that. We did that in anticipation of PREA requirements, which is the Prison Rape Elimination Act. And the U.S. Attorney General has that legislation right now and is anticipated to issue requirements based upon that any day now. So we looked at those requirements in advance and made a determination that it would be better to add the cameras before we built the facility rather than after. So that was a good cost-saving measure for us. We've hired a whole bunch of staff. This is Dave Berdulis, who is one of our officers that was promoted. He similarly was a Renton employee for a number of years. And during the summer, we, and throughout this past year, we've hired a number of employees. We are authorized 101 FTEs and currently, we have 98. We have three vacancies that we are working on filling. And we've promoted our entire staff. So we have 10 brand-new sergeants and we have four brand-new captains that are all with us. And then we also hired another 57 brand-new corrections officers. We had a couple that came to us from other agencies. Almost everybody is new to the field. So when we look back at what we've done in the past year with all new staff, it's pretty amazing. This was our sleepover. We've had some great events during the summer. And there is your own Mr. Taylor, enjoying the wonderful meal that we had that night.
Bread and water.
Bread and water. We actually, our food service, we cater or we contract out our food service with Consolidated Food Management. And they came in that night and had a wonderful meal for us. And the purpose in having this sleeping is that it's a trial run through the facility. It gives us an opportunity to go through and find out that maybe there's a toilet that didn't work or maybe there is a camera that didn't work in that cell or there was a light that didn't work. And so it's an opportunity to go through and test the facilities. It's an opportunity for our staff to actually be moving people through the facility because we don't want to do that with inmates the first day we open. And so that's the purpose of the trial run. We had about 75 people with us that night, I believe. So it was a great learning experience for us and we hope everybody enjoyed being with us that night. Like I said, the mouse hates me here. And like anything, there's always a problem. So here, 12 hours before we were supposed to open, we were in the booking corridor and all of a sudden, we had water coming through the floor drains. And lo and behold, we found out that we had a cracked pipe that had probably been cracked 18 months before we opened the facility and had all sorts of plumbing problems. So we opened anyway on September 2nd, found another way to get inmates into the building and then had to go back and dig the floor up in booking. So it's one of those things that no matter how good you plan, no matter how many times we put water down those pipes, no matter the fact that we had had them filmed and examined to make sure they were all okay, somehow, we missed this crack. And then once we started really putting water down, it found out that we had a crushed pipe, so.
At first, I thought you were going to say that's what Greg Taylor tried to dig out.
Well, just like Shawshank Redemption here, there's... Here's our ribbon cutting, our grand opening, which was on September 8th. And as I said, we today have 349 people in custody. Our high has been 372 and it varies every day. So where are we and what did it cost and where are we in, in relationship to what our estimates were back in 2008? So this is our 2010 adopted project budget, which was $97 million. The majority of that is certainly allocated for construction at $73 million. And then we have another $24 million that is startup project management, financing, those sorts of things. And when you look at that financing total of $7.5 million, you may think, "Well, wait a minute, we're financing more than that." Well, that was pre-funded interest because we deferred those initial interest payments. So we borrowed excess funds to be able to make those first payments. So we weren't doing that while we were operating jails at the same time before opening SCORE. So $97 million was our project budget. And by some, we also, going back to 2008, with our original projections, it was what was this going to cost us to build it? So in 2008, we thought that we would be at $85 million. So remember, we have to take out $7 million for that financing. So that gets our, our project budget down to about $90 million. So it looks like there's a $5 million discrepancy with it. We were off by about $5 million, but I'm happy to say that our project fund is $4.7 million is remaining in contingency right now. So it looks like our construction costs are going to come within about $200,000 of what our estimate was in 2008. So we're very, very pleased with that, that we have built this for what we said we would build it for and that we were able to have so much success. And some of it was wonderful, wonderful construction environment for us when we bid this project, that the construction cost had come down as where they were with, with the draft costs simply because of the, the poor economy. And so we were very lucky to be able to take advantage of that. And where are we as far as member costs and where are we with the maintenance and operation costs? So this is our 2008 estimates. And for those of you that were here on the City Council at the time, when we came to you with the original proposal, we said, "This is what we think it's going to cost to operate the facility." And all of the cities are here on this chart. But if you look at the Renton column, we came to you with three projected costs. And one was what we thought was the best-case scenario, one was the likely-case scenario, and one was the worst-case scenario. And those are kind of the pink, the dark red, and the red columns. So the pink being the best-case scenario, that's where we thought that Renton's cost would be just under $4 million. We thought likely your cost would be at about 5.3 and your worst-case scenario would be about $7.4 million. Well, our 2002 assessment for the city of Renton is just at $4.4 million. So we are way within the healthy, most likely-case scenario for you. I will tell you that our contract revenue has not come in as we projected. And so we're working with a number of cities members to look at marketing and look at where we need to be with that contract revenue. So the darker blue line represents what the worst-case scenario would be if we did not actualize all of the contract revenue that we projected in the 2012 budget. But that again, still puts you at the most likely-case scenario where we thought we would be with our cost. So again, we're very, very happy about that and the fact that we were able to stick with what our 2008 estimates are.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Gorman?
Yeah, so what are some of, are we getting some revenue?
Yeah, we are getting some revenue from, we have contracts with a number of cities, most of them in South King County, so Pacific, Algonia, Covington, Isakua, Kirkland, I didn't bring my list, I'm sorry. We have contracts with, I think, about 10 or 12 cities right now, Mercer Island in addition to that. But we, we would like to see other cities come in. And then there are some other cities we know that are using other jails. So the finance committee has been working to look at what our rate structure is, what our marketing plan is, and looking to see if we can realize some more contract revenue.
Great, thanks.
Rich?
Mr. Person?
I guess when we're talking about, one of the other things I think that happened, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we weren't the only city that King County said, "You got to go find..."
Right.
"...someplace else." And so while they were all scrambling to find someplace, the cities in South King County did something. And then King County found that they really didn't want to kick people out. They needed that, other people to help pay for it. So they've, they went out and did some marketing to lower their price and, and try and keep like Seattle and Bellevue and, so, but I know that when they find out how good these places run, and it's going to go up in King County, we're going to, we'll be right in there. I have all, every confidence in the world of that.
Yeah, yeah. So this is an aerial of the facility. As I said, it's, it's a wonderful, wonderful location. We are surrounded by trees on three sides of us, property that is pretty much undevelopable for a variety of reasons. And so it's really a wonderful, wonderful sight that we sit down there. And you'd hardly know that you're right under the flight path until you go outside and then you hear the planes. But inside, Mr. Taylor, you can probably speak to that, the fact that once you're inside the facility, you really don't hear the planes.
Nothing.
Yeah. So we're happy about that as well. And my contact information as well, if you have any questions, it's always happy to hear from you and provide any additional information I can.
Questions from council? Jay's leaning. I see, go ahead, Randy.
Oh, just one, you didn't have any photos of the visiting area. That's a video, it's video visiting, right?
Yeah, if I go back to the very first one, you can kind of have a peek inside of it. Video visiting is our primary method of visitation and we have a number of video visiting units in each of the housing units. And this area to the front, to the right-hand side of the slide, there are a number of video visiting carols in there. And so we provide three different types of visiting. We always try and do video first as the primary source. And we're also looking at doing remote connections with that. That's one of those things on our work plan for 2012. You know, we know so many family members that are not in the immediate area, perhaps they don't have transportation. We want those inmates to maintain those family connections because that's important to them. It's important to them at time of release. And so we really encourage that video visiting. We also do have non-contact visiting that can occur in separate rooms where we have video rooms, again, using video technology, but it allows for larger groups, perhaps a family group or perhaps if there's an interpreter matter, somewhere where they can have some privacy. And then we do also have, as I said, a separate visiting area for professional visits, so members of the clergy, perhaps attorneys, somebody that wants to come down and see somebody actually face-to-face so we can accommodate that as well.
Okay, thanks.
You're very welcome.
Rich? Terry?
I was just going to ask Penny, about how long are the average stays?
So right now, our average daily stay is about 14 days. It's just under 14 days. And we continue to see that creep. You know, when we looked in September, our average length of stay was about six days. In October, it went up. And partly because it's a new facility, everybody had to be booked into our system on September 2nd regardless of when they were previously housed. So they could have already been in custody for a year. But for us, being in a new computer system, in a new facility, everybody's length of stay started on September 2nd. So we keep seeing that average length of stay creep up and we anticipate that it'll balance out at about 17 days is what we anticipated it to be.
Don?
Mr. Chair?
Don is next.
Well, I just, back to my old mantra is that, A, this is a wonderful facility, but the need for that is driven because we can't get people to take care of the mentally ill. We could, we wouldn't need this big of a facility if we could get the state and the people to listen and take care of the mentally ill people. I, I mean, I'm just...
Yeah, the best analysis I can tell you for that is right now, about 43% of our inmate population is taking medication for a, either depression or other mental illness. So it's about 43%. So it's a very, very... So, it's a very, very high percentage of our population. And I was here a couple weeks ago with Ken Taylor from Valley Cities. We're very, very excited about the grant that Valley Cities has received from Bristol Myers Squibb Foundation, and the impact that that'll have for us. They will have a mental health coordinator actually within the facility, so that we can look at targeting services for the inmates that do fit that need of those that need mental health care, and look at their release planning, and be able to hook them up with community services at the time of release.
Greg?
Yes, and also Penny, it's good to note that in terms of, because we have the multiple partner partnership, that as individuals are being released, that they're transported back and released into the cities in which they were arrested in. So, there isn't any impact to the surrounding community. Also, I wanted to point out that if any of you get an opportunity to visit, take a tour, it is quite remarkable. It's a very state-of-the-art facility. Penny did a fantastic job in the decorating or the design for the actual area where the jailers, you know, are congregated. And it doesn't have that jail feel to it in the area where people have to work at, which is a positive thing. But at the same time, it does have all of the high-tech features that are important to have in a jail facility. Also, there are phones located in the pods where the inmates can make phone calls, they have to pay for those, and their phone calls are recorded, which is good. And so, yeah, if you get an opportunity to take a look at it, it's quite interesting.
Yeah. We are, speaking of the phones, we are working with our law enforcement partners for them to be able to access those phones. We get lots of requests from our agencies that are looking for information about phone calls traditionally in domestic violence situations. And so, we'll be having some training coming up for our law enforcement partners in the next month, so that they'll know how to access that as an investigatory tool. And then, also speaking about the release protocol, we are transporting inmates upon release back to their city of origin. So, they go back to the agency that arrested them, or the agency of residency. And so, that has actually worked out really pretty well for us. We try and do that kind of at scheduled times, and it means that people aren't just released at the facility unless they have confirmed transportation, and that's part of our agreement with the city of Des Moines.
One more question.
Don, go ahead.
What are the rates compared to...
Right, so the member rate for 2012 is $112.50, and that, there is no booking fee associated with that, and that is the total cost. So, there's no additional surcharges on that.
So, I mean, in comparison, it'd be like three, if I, we booked somebody into King County just for the first day, it would be $327, because you got the booking fee, and then the daily fee.
Right, it would be $327 plus any potential medical surcharges. So, if somebody needs medical care, it's an additional $51 a day. If somebody needs mental health care, it's an additional $151 a day. And if somebody is hospitalized, it's an additional $63 per hour that they are at the hospital. So, you can have somebody that's arrested on a $250 misdemeanor warrant, that you could rack up a $3,000 jail bill for 12 hours in jail.
Wow.
And we do, and SCORE provides all those same services for the $112.
Yeah.
I mean, this is...
Very efficient.
It's efficient, it's phenomenal, and you can understand why the people made the decision that we needed to go to something that would control our costs over a long period of time. And I just think it's so important that people know that.
And Mr. Chair? Mr. Gorman?
I don't know if it's been said at this meeting, these are all misdemeanors, right? People that have committed misdemeanors, which by definition, less than a year maximum.
Right, so it's people that on their, their charge, that that existing charge that they're being arrested for are misdemeanors. The exception to that is for our member cities, we will take what are called investigatory felons. And typically, they're held for about a period of 24 hours, and then either the case is reduced down to a misdemeanor, the inmate's released, or if they are charged as a felon, then we transport them to King County Jail. So, then that relieves the law enforcement of that obligation to get them there.
Thanks.
Ms. Brewer?
I just have to make a comment, that I like the black-and-white striped uniforms. Some of your photographs were really great. They really go with the sleek, modern design of the interior, so.
Yeah, I have to, I have to give credit, Lighted Construction, which built the facility, and DLR Group, which is the architect, actually hired a professional photographer to come in and take many of these pictures. So, I wish I could say I was responsible for the wonderful clarity in them. But it was a wonderful photographer that came in and did those for us.
Mr. Covington waving in.
Good, Mr. President, council, just a final comment. You may know or may not, but our own mayor chairs the SCORE admin board this year, and of course, Ewan has been very actively involved on the finance committee. Chief Milosevic is involved, just to finish the time, as the chair of the ops board. And as we've said before, I think the credit for this facility coming from the dream to the reality really sits in front of us in the form of Penny. I mean, she has not only almost single-handedly convinced all of us that this was a great idea, but then really was the person who helped develop it into a legitimate proposal. We took it forward. She oversaw the construction, brought it in on time and on budget. She's assembled a great staff team, and I think we just look forward to many, many good things.
Thanks.
As usual, a great regional partnership with Renton taking the lead. Penny, it was a great presentation. Thank you for your efforts and for the presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our next item is a human services update, and I asked to have this presented. I was meeting with Terry Igashiama and Karen Burgsvik on another topic, and we were discussing the grants that we offered last year that come up every year in the budget. And so, again, being biennial, they kind of, what we would think would be an off-year, because they didn't have any money to hand out, but that wasn't what they did. It was not an off-year. They worked very hard and came up with some exciting new, I don't know about new, but some partnerships and stuff that I was really impressed with, and I thought that you guys would enjoy hearing about. So, with that, I'll give it to Terry Igashiama.
Good evening, Council President Swicker and council members. I'm Terry Igashiama. I'm head of the Community Services Department. And it's appropriate that we're here with SCORE presenting, and in fact, that we're here to talk about the business of prevention. And hopefully, with the funds that you are putting through in our general fund, that we're helping keep some of the clients out of the jail, of the SCORE facility, and they're finding ways to get healthier. And so, that's really what we're here about tonight, is to talk about some of the things that we've been doing. We do fund, or you do fund, the community services, human services funding for two years. It is, follows the same budget cycle. What was great this year, then, is that we had the opportunity to do a lot of things on the off-season here to really move forward. Thank you, Jay. What we're trying to do in the human services, in November of 2010 was the last time we presented to you, and that was when we brought the funding forward that was done by our Human Services Advisory Committee. And Karen and Linda and Rob will be talking about that, introducing our members that are here tonight. And while you've been really happy with the great job that the commission has done, and the scoring tools, and all the work that's been done, you asked us to go back and look on this off-year, if there are better ways to work with the agencies that we're funding, and how we can better educate them about how we can all work together to provide the best services in the community. And that's what this group has done. I can take no credit, other than I get to attend and absorb all of the great things that they do. And they have done a great job of that, and along with the staff. So, we appreciate all the work that's been done. So, we're here tonight to talk about our next application process, what we've done. What we'll be doing is we're going forward, and to make sure that if there's anything else you need us to connect with you on, that we're doing that. And that you can hear about some of the great success stories that have gone on with the agencies we're funding. It is no doubt that you're hearing, both federally and regionally and statewide, that the funding for human services is less and less, and the demand is more and more. So, the better we can match our agencies that we're funding, and we can all work better as partners, the better the clients that come in to seek those services will benefit in the community, and it makes our community much healthier. And again, Council President Swicker, thank you for inviting us, and so we can present this to all of you, as to what I think is a great success story that this team has done this last year.
Thank you. I'm Karen Burgsvik, the Human Services Manager, and I want to introduce Linda Smith, the chair of the advisory committee, and Rob Spear, who's the vice chair. And then, we have two members of the committee here as well, Adia Crowell and Ellen Bladen. And then, Diane Utteck is a contract specialist that worked on this, so it was a team effort. So, we're here today to go over briefly over our funding process, and then really share with the accomplishments that we have done over the past year. So, I'm gonna, with Rob, go over really quickly what our current funding process is. It really starts with the development of a common funding application that's online, and all the cities in King County will be using this year. It's a regional effort to have one application, so that agencies that apply to multiple jurisdictions can do it efficiently and without a lot of overhead. We want money to go toward service deliveries, and not toward filling out grant applications for all the cities. So, a funding workshop will be held at Carco Theater on March 15th, that will kick off our initial funding process for 2013 and 2014. The applications will be due April 26th. There's going to be regional assistance for agencies applying for funding online through eCityGov. And then, in Renton, Diane will be available to help any other, help agencies that want additional assistance. We've always been available to help agencies in whatever way they want help in applying for funds. And the advisory committee's also set aside $5,000 to help agencies in Renton that are interested in applying with any technical questions or assistance that they might want. In Renton, we have nine areas that agencies apply to us for funding. And basically, an agency identifies which of the nine areas they want to apply under, and they compete with the other agencies in that category. Homelessness is one of them, is an example. So, if an agency applied under that result, they would compete with the other agencies also applying that fit under ending homelessness. We divide the members into groups by the result area, and then they read the applications for that area and rate them. So, all the team members are reading the same application and scoring the same thing. Rob's gonna go over a little bit about the rating tool that we, the advisory committee developed in the last funding cycle, which you've got a copy of.
Yeah, so a new common funding application drove a need for a new rating tool. And with the amount of requests significantly exceeding the budget available, it was essential to us that we develop an objective rating tool. And it's, in order to do that, it's critical that we base that assessment on the information included in the application online. You have before you the rating tool that was developed. It's divided up into four major categories. There's an assessment of program need, the need it's addressing, and the program description is 50 points out of 100. The evaluation of the outputs and outcomes from the program is 30 points out of 100. The financial perspective, their ability to describe their financial health, is 15 points. And their performance history, or their past performance on city of Renton funding, is five points, or 5%. So, any new agencies not previously funded by the city would not be able to get those last five points. So, in the major area of need, under the 50 points, you can see on the screen that broken down into three major categories. The description, again, the agencies describe the need that they're trying to assess, and the program that they've put together to meet that need. The accessibility, no matter how good a program is, if the people of need cannot get to the program to access the services required, there's a shortcut there. And then, coordination, we placed a small emphasis this year on the ability of the agencies to coordinate with agencies providing similar services in the region, and more specifically in the city. And then, the 30 points for the outputs and outcomes were divided equally, 15 points towards their outputs, and their ability to meet their outputs, and 15 points for their ability to describe the outcomes they were trying to achieve in helping Renton residents. And as we talked previously, the financial history was 15.
As well.
Okay, thank you. I, first of all, want to say on behalf of the Human Services Board, it has certainly been our pleasure to serve this year, and we serve with a deep sense of humility and compassion for the citizens of Renton and the needs that exist. So, one of the things that we believe that we've shown, that our support for the citizen is that we care for them, and we believe that we've exemplified that in the manner in which we've conducted our business. One of the goals is to make human services more accessible to the Renton community. And what we've done as an advisory committee is creating relationships with agencies, the agencies that we find, as well as the ones that we do not find, to show them that we are really interested in creating this relationship and making those vital connections for the city of Renton. We have done that in several ways. We've made ourselves available. We've invited them to our committee meetings. We've gone out to various agencies. And what that does is, we're really emphasizing the importance of creating relationships and partnerships, so that the services are connected, and that people are aware of the services. We are more aware of the increasing needs of the community, and as you all are certainly aware, that the needs are shifting, and there is a great need for the work that we do and the services that are funded. We also understand the urgencies of the needs, you know, how homelessness affects families, and women and children are more vulnerable, and they're a large part of the population that's out there that are certainly in need. And I think our visibility in the community acknowledged that the city of Renton really cares about its citizens, and that we are concerned about every citizen of Renton. So, I think we've done a really good job at that, and I think the community really appreciates that, so.
So, one of the things we did is increase the accessibility to agencies. The committee actually, instead of having regular meetings, went out to the agencies on two different occasions, where we held our meetings and did tours of agencies, and learned about that. We also had four meetings where 12 agencies had the opportunity to come to us and do presentations on anything that they wanted to that wasn't covered in their court of the reports. So, 12 agencies came and did that. Did you want to say anything?
So, in essence, the outcome of that, some of it I've already covered, is it's more in-depth knowledge about what the agencies are doing and how they're really impacting. It's also, we get to hear the stories, because it's the stories that make up the city of Renton. Those narratives really make up who we are as citizens of Renton and the city of Renton. So, we get to hear those stories, and very powerful stories, very powerful human stories, stories of how people are really being helped. So, that's very life-giving for us. Also, I think we increased the awareness and diversity by cultivating and embracing and reaching out to as many organizations as we can. And I, you know, I commend our committee, because the committee really shows up and showed the support for the community. And I think in doing that, it shows that we care, and that we're, what we're doing is we're doing it to make a difference to the people and the citizens of Renton.
The other thing we did is, we set aside $5,000 in 2011 for what we called the capacity building project. Essentially, we went through a request for proposals and hired a consultant that worked with the subgroup of the Human Services Advisor Committee to help agencies. And they did self-assessments of their operations, and they did four workshops after surveying the agencies, as far as what did they want to know more about. And then, he also provided one-on-one technical assistance. So, 15 agencies received 51 hours of direct service, and 38 agencies attended one of our workshops, and 100% of the attendees agreed that our workshops met the stated goals. So, we really tried to work with them on identifying what would they like to know more about, and then provided that service to them. And we, like I mentioned, the committee has set aside $5,000 to do that as well in 2012. And I think that's been very helpful. When the agencies had trouble meeting their performance, quarterly performance goals, staff really worked with them on a plan on how to achieve them. For instance, Senior Services has a volunteer transportation program. For instance, Senior Services has a volunteer transportation program and, um, their funding was, um, increased in 2011 and 2012 and they were having difficulty, um, reaching the performance numbers of the number of miles traveled and the number of one-way trips. So working with them, we developed a plan where they did targeting outreach to Renton including presentations and brochures and flyers at medical and dental offices and senior housing facilities. They also increased their web presence. By the end of the year, they had achieved 94 and 98% of their goals and they got their full reimbursement. But we're really emphasizing that we're not here to be punitive, we're here to help you be successful. Another example of working with agencies is the Valley Cities Homeless Outreach Project. They were really having a hard time identifying where the homeless, um, were when the program first started, so we actually worked with them on identifying all the feeding programs in Renton and Valley City staff started attending all of them, the regulars at the community supper and at the friendly kitchen, and their performance numbers were over 100% by the end of the year as well. We held one meet and greet for agencies in 2011. The purpose was really to find out what other agencies are doing. We find a lot of agencies don't know what other agencies are doing and the more that we can, uh, help people be more familiar with the resources that exist, the better it is. The agencies really appreciated that and we've actually scheduled another meet and greet here at City Hall on February 23rd from 9:30 to 11:30 where any agency, not just the ones we fund, but any agency that serves Renton residents are welcome to come and learn about each other and, um, go from there.
One of the challenges we've seen with, uh, various agencies is an inability to distinguish between outputs and outcomes. And simply stated, the way I look at it is outputs is, is what the agencies do to treat the symptoms, but outcomes is what the agencies do to make a difference, to make the change in, in the clients that they're serving, to make the difference in the community. I have a strong background in, in determining outcomes, putting plans together and managing performance to plan, so at that meet and greet, I offered to volunteer for any of the agencies, uh, to tap me as, as a consultant to come in and, and help them with their uh, ability to establish outcomes for their particular services. And two of the agencies elected to take me up on that offer and I've worked with them this year to, to help get a better understanding of how to measure their, their true performance of their, their programs.
All of our reporting forms are also on the web and one agency was having difficulty, um, actually completing the forms on the web. They couldn't open the document when they, um, tried to enter information, it jumped around. And so one of the things, um, we've done is work with IS so that they can just pull up the form, fill it out and hit submit. So starting in 2013, two, 2013, yeah, 12, sorry, first quarter of 2012, they'll be able to more easily submit their reports to us. So we're trying to be, if someone identifies a need in agency, be responsive and take that into consideration and change the way we do business. One of the things we're also very interested in is continuous evaluation of what we do and how we do it. Regionally, we did a survey after we did this common application to get their results, but also the advisory committee members wanted to know locally, how did we do? And so they came up with a survey of their own that we use to survey the agencies to see how well did we do in the funding cycle and how we couldn't improve. And so we got 18 responses and 71% of them rated their experience with the online application as good or excellent. So we really took a lot of their feedback and, and we're incorporating it into the next rendition of this, um, online application. Renton, um, we continue to look for ways to help agencies minimize the time spent on contracts and reporting. Um, agencies spend way too much time, I think, on reporting than I, I think they should. So when programs are funded by more than one city, there's now one contract for all the cities that fund them and one city that's the lead for it. And this replaces separate contracts with every city that funds them and separate reporting. And Renton is actually the lead, um, working on the joint contracts and, and there's 13 joint contracts in South King County and Renton actually is the lead staff on six of them and that's what Diane does. The agencies love joint contracts because they're only dealing with one person versus every jurisdiction that funds them. So in conclusion, I think Linda is going to.
Well, I think if we could sum up the work that we do, if, is to think about us as giving hope to the hopeless and restoring life to those whose life had been taken from them. And I think one of the, uh, site visits that we visit that really had a tremendous impact on me is babies who were born to mothers who were addicted to drugs and, uh, one of the centers that we fund, um, nurtured those children back to life and it was just, it's so heartfelt to know that those children would get a chance to live a, um, a wholesome life, so, um, and that's just one of the examples, but it, just to see it, it's like, you know, there is hope and so I, I say that what we do, the funds that you all provide for us to, uh, support these agencies is to give hope to those who maybe otherwise would lose hope. So thank you for your support.
Good job, you guys. So what we've learned is that it doesn't matter, uh, how detailed you make that application process because it's like an evaluation. It can be the best paperwork ever, but if we don't have the human side and the secondary part of working with all of our agencies, then that scoring tool doesn't matter. We knew we had a great scoring tool. What we were missing was some of the in-between time of capturing all of our connectiveness with the agencies that we work for and those that, as we said, that we haven't funded but found ways to match up. We are going to have to continue to find a way for our human service agencies to work together. Um, I wouldn't be surprised if we some, we see some meld in the future. Uh, administrative costs are high and as we're working and looking at making sure that every dollar, as much as each dollar can go back into that service, we've got to continue on that path. So, um, we, we thought you would be excited to hear about all the work that's done in between and I have no doubt when we start our next application process for 13, 14, we will have lots of applicants, we will have lots of people in need, it's going to be a very tough decision for you and certainly for our, our, uh, human services advisory board, but, um, that we will do the best we can because we have spent a year really working with all those agencies, so.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, I, I, I really like what I'm hearing and I, uh, I appreciate the work that you all do. Last year, last time we visited this process was a little interesting and you deserve credit for the work that you did during that time, but I see that what you've done, uh, from that point up until now is that you've really, you know, done some additional work. And I sense a greater capacity for compassion and concern regarding these agencies because they're all different. And, um, some of them have expertise when it comes to people who know how to write grants and dot the i's and cross the t's, but some of them have a volunteer who have a big heart, but they may lack some of the skills. And it appears that your new process takes all of those things into consideration to make sure that, you know, we're not letting anyone fall between the crap, the cracks and I, I want to tell you that I appreciate that. I also want to say that I have, uh, attended, uh, some of your capacity building, uh, workshops and, uh, Nate Phillips with the South, uh, King Council of Human Services does a fantastic job and I saw the enthusiasm, the participation. I think that on another level, what you all are doing in addition to being the, uh, the catch, uh, entity that makes those decisions about where the grants are going to go, but you're also strengthening these organizations by going out and meeting with them on their terms, getting out there, uh, learning about them and that, that, that gives us some exponential benefit there when we can make the right decisions on who we're going to fund and also strengthen those, uh, organizations in terms of strengthening their ability to not only get funding from us, but from other sources also. So I take my hat off to you, great job and I'm looking forward to the process.
Questions or comments from other council members?
Mr. President?
Palmer?
Uh, I agree with everything that Greg just said and I really appreciate what I'm seeing in you reaching out and being proactive during the time that we're not making the decisions. The two instances that you, um, the examples that you cited of you folks noticing that there was, um, a lack of reaching what their prospects were and then helping them to achieve it is just huge. And then also I know that, um, going back to that last process where there were some Renton long-funded, um, organizations that didn't get as much as we had thought they might, um, that if I remember right, the primary reason was the grant application itself, not that they weren't doing the work that they had always been doing. And everything that you've put in place since then, um, I think is just wonderful because we know that the next grant, I think we had about double the request for money, am I remembering that right Diane, Terry, the last time, um, that we were able to accommodate and it will probably be even more painful this next time. I'm so impressed that you went out on site, that you invited people to come make presentations, um, all of that. The meet and greet, I think are just very significant and you all should be very proud. I'm proud of you and thank you from the bottom of my heart for all you're doing. Diane, for you to head up and that, that's very complicated for people that don't do it all the time. Um, and I agree with you that there's just way too much reporting, it takes up too much time from giving the human services that that organization excels in. So thank you Diane and Karen and Linda, your whole team, thank you very much for your service.
Other council members? Um, yeah, I, I, I think Greg summed it up perfectly and he spoke to the, the fact that you guys took what Renton had and broadened it into the groups and created the other partnerships and just exponentially took our, our funding and, and made it even better and more impactful and then you really looked to the eye of the future. I think I can comfortably say on behalf of the council, please accept our sincere thanks, the entire commission and, and you for being here tonight and the work that you're doing because it really matters and it's, it's a, it's a commission that I know personally as a council member I have a lot of faith in and I know that you guys are really doing great work for the citizens of Renton and Karen and Terry and all of you, thank you very much and please accept our thanks. And with that, we're done early, so we will adjourn the committee of the hall and reconvene to seven for the council meeting.